Mayor, I'd like to call to order the work session meeting of the Elmwood Park Mayor and Council for December 10, 2020, to order at 7:07 PM. On roll call, Council members, Basolo.
Here.
Golebeck.
Here.
Ingui.
Here.
Pala Green.
Here.
Wetchler.
Here.
Council President Balaschieri.
Here.
Mayor Colletti.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Erin. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to welcome you here this evening. Sorry we're a little late. We've had two special meetings prior to this and council took a little break. And we'll get started right now. Whereas Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of the State of New Jersey require at the commencement of each meeting, a statement of compliance be read by the presiding officer. Now, therefore be advised that the meeting's requirements for this meeting have been met by publishing an annual notice in the Record and Herald News of Woodland Park and posting such notice in the office of the barrel clerk, as well as in a public place within the municipal building, and by notifying interested citizens. Notice was posted on January 8, 2020. May I have a motion to open the floor for the public comment?
Sound moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public here to speak at this point? Yes, please come forward. Sir, please come up here.
Yeah, he can sit up there and...
This way we can hear you. Have a seat, sir.
If you can please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, it's Michael Langerlin. I have actually, I'm in between residents, but it's 256 Washington Avenue and 26, 256 Washington Ave and 26 East Washington.
Mike, please come forward to the mic.
Yeah, it's a little tough with the...
Yeah, it is. It's, believe me, it's so difficult what we've been going through here in the last couple of months.
Yes, thank you.
You're good? Okay. I'm here concerned over the handicap ramp. I have sent several emails out to everybody, and I know I've received an email from Mr. Philigno, and also I think from you, also from Mr. Sol, sorry. But again, like Game of Thrones, winter is coming. And I'm getting a little concerned over the fact that even a light sprinkle and that area just fills right up, you know? You know, I don't want to stock it as a pond, but it gets really bad. And again, I just don't want somebody slipping and falling, and there's no way to control that, you know? It's one thing when you're in the spring and, you know, it's just water, but then everybody walks around. They walk on my lawn, they walk in the street. So, you know, again, I just, I know that you had mentioned that you're getting bids, and I just would like to know where we stand on getting this fixed.
Mayor, can I answer?
Yes, please.
So, our borough engineer here, Mike Cristaldi, Mike, can you answer the gentleman?
Yes. We scheduled the surveyors to come up. That's a very flat area, so in order to do it right, so that doesn't happen like that again, we need to survey the gutter line and the sidewalk so that it goes into the right elevation, which is the reason the water's ponding there. It's flowing back into the sidewalk, and it really shouldn't. It's not the right elevation. So, we have the surveyers scheduled to come up, and then we'll put a plan together. That was supposed to be part of a larger project, but maybe we'll break it out and just bid it out separately, and then get three quotes from various contractors and just have them come out and do the construction.
Can you give them an estimated time on when we can start rolling this out, Mike?
Well, if we don't have to bid it, I mean, I'll try to get the surveyors out there by the end of next week, and then hopefully, Christmas is coming hard and fast, so, I mean, we'll have to, I mean, if you're lucky, you might get it done by Christmas. We'll try, we'll try.
Are we pushed to have that done?
Yes.
And we can remove that from the other projects?
It'll be, it'll be, yeah, that's all. Yeah, it'll be removed from the others.
Does that help?
That does help. The only other thing that I'm concerned over is, again, it's going to get, start getting cold. If this doesn't, and it gets delayed, which, you know, again, I've been trying to get this completed for over a year now. Is there any way that we can make sure that nobody is going to be walking in that area and falling? Because, you know, they're going to be coming looking for me, and, you know, it's just going to be creating a bigger problem. So, I'm concerned over the ice. I really am. That's my main concern.
Sure. So, I can have a couple of things done. I can have the DPW salt and sand it when we know it's going to have a storm that'll freeze, and we could, I could talk to my traffic division about possibly combing it off.
Okay. That's fine, as long as I just don't want somebody walking through it and hurting themselves.
That's good. Where do we?
You know, so, okay.
We've had some extraordinary events occur in a negative way through the process. This has always been on our list, and I won't go into the detail because it sounds like excuses, but it's never left us. And we sooner want to see this done as much as you do, so...
Yes, well, I'm planning on moving into the new house. Right now, my residence is at 26 East Washington.
Yeah.
My mom and dad passed away, and my mother recently, and so now we're looking to, you know, move into the other house. But I'm concerned over that because it's just an issue that I don't want to put myself, you know, I thought about selling it, and I thought about moving into it. I prefer to move into it. I've lived in this town all my life. You know, so, again, I'd like to try and get it fixed so that when I move in, I don't have to worry about, you know, that one piece.
Well, we're on it, sir.
Okay. I thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public here to speak? Mr. Roberts, please come forth. How are you, sir? We all know Mr. Roberts from the Elks Club, I'm sure. Many years.
I'm a part of them.
Devoted volunteer.
Right. Okay. Paul Roberts, 260 Washington Avenue, Elmwood Park. Along with that, the question is, the town put that in, okay? Wherever they put them in. Are the homeowners responsible for that? If somebody falls, or is it the town?
It's a question for our attorney, Sal. If somebody falls on the street...
I didn't hear the...
Are you talking about the ADA ramp, Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
The question is...
Were those two, the ramps, the Rosemont ramps?
Is it sidewalk?
Yeah, it's in the sidewalk, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a, in all the time. It's a residential area.
Yeah, it's in the residential area, but the town put them in. The homeowner didn't put them in.
Yeah, it makes no difference.
Who's responsible for it?
The homeowner.
So, in other words, if they fall, the homeowner is responsible.
Unless, unless there's some sort of showing that it was built incorrectly.
Well, you got that. That was incorrect. That's why we're down here.
There's other factors involved.
Yeah, yeah, but...
Depending on whether the property is a residential home, it's possible to fall nowadays on sidewalks on a residential area without being commercial. There's a restriction on the waters.
So, in other words, you put it in. If it's incorrect, and we fall, somebody falls on it, the homeowner pays for it.
You're going to have to ask the board and senior's attorney with the power of divorce to correct it.
Don't make sense to me. Thank you.
We're going to get it resolved, Mr. Roberts. That's our goal.
But in the meantime, the homeowners that have this in their possession, and if it's not incorrect, they got to pay for it.
No, that's not true.
No, Mr. Roberts, come on, come on.
Well, that's the way I look at it.
That's not true. It depends on a lot of factors. It depends, it's not strict that the homeowner is responsible. There's a lot of factors, there's factors involved. All right? If it's built improperly, and it can be shown, then whoever built it is responsible.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Anybody else from the public here to speak at this time? If not, I'll close the public portion. Mr. Laney?
Hi, Mayor. First on the agenda this evening is our engineers' report. Before I turn it over to Mr. Cristaldi to go over the monthly status report, there are a few items on the agenda. The first one being in regards to Rosemont Park, the rubber recycle invoice. I understand that Mr. Alamo, Mr. Mohammed has left, but we are waiting to release payment for the rubber recycle playground flooring at Rosemont Park. So, we need a report from Alamo stating that it was inspected, the job is complete before we make that payment. So, if you guys can get that over to us.
Yep.
That was, I don't know if anyone else from the council has questions on that? Item number two is an update from Mr. John Clemente regarding the gutter replacement on Roth. And we'll be bidding it out with a few other curbs. So, they are working on the schedule to receive bids, the specs. So, the paving will have to be postponed on Roth until the spring because of the weather, but we'll be moving forward with that project as a whole, as it was recommended by Councilman And then lastly, also submitted by Alamo was the improvements to Elmwood Park Marina, the Green Acres preliminary assessment report. This is required through the Green Acres Grant, and Alamo proposes to prepare and submit the PAR for a lump sum price of $30,000. So, with your approval, I will put that on the agenda for the 17th.
I'd just like to speak a little bit on this Green Acres. In the past, we were a little hesitant as a government to take on any Green Acres grant monies, and that was because of the fact that once you take their money, then that park is, it's a park for everybody. However, you get to set your schedule first. And I think in today's days and age, when you got an entity like that, that has that massive amount of money, that we should, we should look into it, and we should take that money, and we should make sure that our schedules are filled, and then whatever happens after that. I know Councilman Golebeck had a question about the previous councils and how they looked upon it, and I just thought I'd get it out and explain it. So, but I do believe at this point, and I did believe in that message, that we want to keep our parks local for the last 20, 20 years, but now I actually think the opposite. I think that money's out there. Let's get it. There's nobody going to be breaking down the fences to get into our parks anyhow, so I just thought I'd bring that out. Clarification.
If I could just ask a question of the engineer. If, you know, if we move forward on this, what's the timeline on completing the PAR? And can the creation of the bid specifications kind of happen simultaneously to design services? Because we approve Alamo to do design services. So, can both things be going on at once?
Yes, both things can definitely be going on at once. The PAR is a, it's a kind of thing where you have to, you have to buy old records, insurance records as far back as they go. They want some kind of documentation as to what kind of uses ever existed on that property. Because that gives them an idea whether or not there could be any contamination. So, it's a lengthy process. You have to go through to the towns, they have to look through all their records and find out whether there ever underground storage tanks, and it's, yeah. So, I'm sure he'll be working on it, and it'll coincide with the design of the project.
Okay.
So, do I have approval to put this on the agenda for next week? Okay. With that being said, Mr. Cristaldi, the floor is yours for the monthly status report.
Okay. Rosemont Park, there was a fence that was to be installed. They are actually working on it this week, installing it, but I believe there's also some lighting that we may want to install this, so, you know, we're waiting to hear if you need any assistance. It's going to be determined whether or not you're going to go to public service and have them install the lights and make a maintenance agreement with them, or to put them in yourselves, and then you carry the responsibility. So, we're still waiting to hear on that. Tennis courts, they're done. I got the final estimate done today. I've got to send it over to Erin tomorrow, and we'll close that project out. Tuella Water Main, they've completed that work. We got some punch list items, but they're done with that project as well. So, that's, they're wrapping them up for this year. The Marina Park, we just talked about the PAR that we have that. We have the surveyor scheduled to come up there. They'll do survey, and then we, once we have the survey base maps, we'll be able to start working on a plan. The CBG, the donor, donor was paved, but Echo, the PSCNG is still doing some work out there, so we're going to hold off on the paving on Echo, but donor is, has been completed. You also have the 2020 DOT grant for Gilbert Avenue. That's also done. We have some punch list items on that as well, but the work is essentially done. Cherry Hill Playground, that also has a fence that has to go in. I'll have to check on that. That wasn't in there the last time we looked, but we will check again, and then we'll be able to finalize that project. Birchwood Park, I believe we've got all of the documents. There were some documents that had to be finalized. I saw an email from DEP. They said they had them, so we've got to just see if they're willing to close that out with us now as well. But that one's pretty much done too. We have some priority projects. You have the curbs, part of which is Roth Street, which we just talked about, and then the other streets, we'll be working on those as well to check the curbing and make sure we get that done before PSCNG gets involved on any of those streets. And then we have the borough-wide drainage improvements. We have a proposal in for that, and then we're going to also do the, the Washington Street corner that we're working, we're working on that separately.
That, Washington, Washington has a priority.
It is priority, yes. And then we got improvements to, the improvements to 2019 DOT Municipal Aid. That's the one where the county went out and paved the road, so we repurposed the money to be for streetscape. So, we're going to give you a proposal for that, along with the money that you got for the grant. You got another grant you just, you just got for $239,000, the 2021 DOT. We'll do those, we'll combine those two projects as one, because it's one big stretch on MOLA.
What was the total on your charge for the two?
Two, on what?
Alamo's charge for the two projects.
Oh, I don't, I don't think, I don't think we gave you a proposal for that yet. I was trying to work up the construction cost on that, so we didn't give you a proposal on that yet.
Just, just so you, just for your records, Mike, because we had a lot of versions of this back and forth when we were working with Ali, so just for your notes, when you designed this project, we're looking to run the conduit between sidewalk and curb.
Right, and the grass strip.
Under the grass, yes. Not, not in the sidewalks, because we wanted to minimize the cost and then just, you know, obviously replace the grass, to the extent that we can. I don't know how much that affects your proposal as you create it.
The worst part about that, I was looking at that the other day. There's a lot of trees and things on that strip, so either I can tap into different poles so I don't have to tear all the trees out, otherwise, I don't know if you'd want the trees removed. That's something we'll have to talk about.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably like a last resort, but we're trying to get the light pole effect, you know, without this thing costing a ridiculous amount. So, if you get papers and you have to replace sidewalks, you're not going to get very far with this money.
Right. I got you. Like I said, the only thing I saw that was obstruction were the trees, because you do have to run the conduit the whole length, and, you know. Unless, unless, you know, you can, you can keep tapping in different locations on the poles.
I mean, could you swerve out of that lane to go around trees if you needed to in certain areas?
Yeah, we could. We could do that. This way, we, yeah, we can do that.
I mean, I think the council would agree that the more trees we keep on the boulevard, they're big, beautiful trees, the better. Yeah, so...
All right. Then there was some projects that were going on at the county. One was a traffic signal at River Road and River Drive intersection. I was speaking to Gene at the county, and he said to me that the county will do the traffic signal, but the borough has to do the base plan, the construction plan that shows the roadway, the curbs, and where you exactly you wanted to place it. And then we'd pass that along to the county, and they would take that base plan then, and they would put the traffic signals in where they needed them. So, it looks like it's a, this little split responsibility.
Is that what's been holding this up all this time?
Yeah, he, yeah, I was involved in this a while ago, and that was never my understanding of it either. I always, I mean, I haven't seen it for a while now, but I was, now that I saw it again, and I called up Gene, I was kind of surprised, to tell you the truth, that he was saying that the way it works is the town has to do the base map with the roads.
Well, they changed the course on it, because that's not what it was originally.
Yeah. Unless, unless Gene was mistaking it with a different project. I'll call him again tomorrow, but he seemed to understand, because he did forward me the survey. It was a red line survey that was involved a while ago, and so he seems to have the right project.
I'm sure he understands. He lives in town.
Yeah, all right. The head walls at the intersection of Lindwood and River Drive, I was trying to get ahold of Kristoff. He's the one that does the drainage. I couldn't get ahold of him, so I'm still, I'll still track him down, but I don't know what they're really doing on that. They don't seem to have moved on that either. That's been hanging around for a while. Okay. Veterans, the Memorial Park, that's on hold for now. The Police Station Edition is on hold. The Culvert DEP permit is on hold. Scott's going to see what, excuse me, what he has on that. The library electric was on hold.
Say that again, the library what?
There was a library electric that, I guess there was some discussion about the library. They couldn't get the electric connected.
Then the contractor has to do some work, and then once they're done with the work, they'll call our inspector, he'll come over and inspect it, and they do that.
Okay, yeah.
They haven't done their part yet.
They didn't do, yeah, because last, I spoke to the contractor, and they said that they were set up to meet with public service. Actually, they were supposed to meet on one Friday, and then public service never showed up, so they came out for nothing.
But what was, Tony was saying today, that they need to first get permission here. They need, we, they need for us to inspect that line and the connections for that electric line.
But they haven't done the work yet.
Yeah, they haven't done it.
For public services, called into, because of the line, if you are inspecting, it's okay first.
First.
Right. And the public service has to control.
That's where we're at with that. So, who's, who's going to jolt the contractor here?
Well, it's electrician, Bobby. Mayor, it's the electrician that needs to do it. You should call, who Tony gave me the line for, you know, call this gentleman, come in to inspect it, to make sure everything is done correctly. Then we will get the inspection, okay, and then they can call public service to come in and hook it everything up.
But they have to call us. They have to call our building department. That's what Tony...
The electrician has to call our building department to have the gentleman come over and inspect it.
Right.
Or we can call public service.
So, how do we get that message to the contractor?
Well, the electrician was called twice already. He told, gave them the number. Tony, you've already gave the electrician the number to call the gentleman.
Right.
He hasn't called them.
He hasn't called them.
He hasn't called them, because I don't think the work's been completed yet.
This guy's going to go down as the worst contractor in the world, as far as I'm concerned. Ah, yeah, yeah. This, this just drags and drags and drags and drags and drags.
We can wait until January before we can open up the library. It's going to be the next March or April.
I hope, I hope we live to see it open.
I'm doing this 19 years, Bobby. I'm doing this 19 years already, man. Trying to get this library done. I'm doing it around the corner.
It's not easy.
No, it's not.
A little play on words there, huh?
No.
Again, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you know, when I, when I did reach out to the contractor, he kind of made it sound to me like he was in a catch 22, that he needed something from public service. But that may not be the case. He may have been giving me a story, so...
What Tony said, they need to call for an inspection on the line and the connections of the new service. They need to call, then from that point, we will go down, inspect it, say it's okay, hopefully it is, and then he can give them the cut card to go to public service.
Public service has to be called and asked.
So, we need to prompt this, this...
Electrician.
...lassardic contractor. That's what we need to do.
The BA will be on the board. Mike, got it.
Go ahead, Mike, I'm sorry.
The stormwater management, Scott's been handling that. The grant applications, there was, the one, I mentioned the one already that we're going to combine with the existing grant, and you also have another grant that you applied for, the 2021 Transportation Alternative Grant, and we gave some mapping and whatnot to Millennium, and they've applied for that grant, and we're just waiting to hear now. Then there was the pump station. There's some work that needs to be done on the Slaughter Dam Road Sewer Pump Station, but Scott's going to try to get all of the work that he needs and bundle it so that you get a little better, better deal on the work and do it all at once. So, waiting to hear on Scott from that.
Just to comment on that, I mean, this item has been on for a while. It's not a comment at Alamo, but when it was first presented by the DPW Director, it seemed to be very emergent. I think we passed a bond for a lot of these things, and it's been like, you know, either the problem went away, or it's not an emergency, so...
I'll find out. Please.
The sewer force main under the Market Street Bridge, I believe, maybe...
Do you want to finish with...
Oh, yeah, I only have, I only have one more little thing. The Dog Park was, was on, was on hold for now. The last thing I have is, is the, the bridge.
That's it, you're on?
I'm, I'm done. I'm, I'm done.
So, with that in mind, Mayor and Council, I, I presume so of the obligation of seeing what I can do with regards to the issue as to the sewer line going through the bridge, and after taking pictures, photos, and have been in touch with Mr. Fugia, who is the head engineer over at, for the county. I had a lengthy discussion with him. I have received some documentation from him. The issue is that they are not yet moving with anything on this. And the discussion was that potentially, if the town would like to just make repairs to what's existing there, they can continue to utilize. The question comes to how much money to spend on it, whether it's viable or not. And I said to him that we feel under the circumstances that once they start planning and designing, that they should take into consideration this aspect that we should be able to utilize again, the same place, because of the exorbitant cost that it would take us to relocate the pipe. He understood that, and he agrees with me in a sense, that the expenditure is tremendous and will be like two to three to four million dollars, but we would have to go under the road. When I brought that issue up to him, he says, you know what? We are on the, just the starting plan for this thing. We have applied and made applications to the federal DOT for money and funding, but it hasn't come through yet, and we're still in the process of working. But I can assure you, that's going to take at least two to three years before that gets accomplished. Once that gets accomplished, then the borough and anyone related to the bridge will have notice, and they will be able to come in and present their objections, and suggestions, and recommendations. And I said, look, I really don't think it would be proper for us to start any kind of lawsuit. And I said, I think we could all work this out. He says, you know, when that point comes, I think we can sit down and talk. So, at this junction, there really isn't anything we can do other than a choice. Either you repair the pipe where it's fully repaired and it still is able to be used, or you can continue to at least patch it up until the time comes. And that's where the position is. So, there's really nothing, and no one is saying that you have to pick the pipe out.
What's the assessment of the pipe? Do we, do we know, Mike, at this point?
If I may, it was a discussion with John, that just repairing the pipe will run into like at least two to 300,000 dollars, just to replace the pipe. I've spoken to Scott about it. He, they've been doing, patching up, and he seems to feel that potentially, he can continue to do that. One thing that we have is, right next to our pipe is a abandoned public service gas Scott is thinking of, seeing if that goes to be utilized in the meantime, to service the sewer line, but potentially be getting permission from public service to allow us to use it. That's an avenue that may be helpful.
Going forward. So, what are you getting out of them, that within two years, three years, that the So what are you getting out of them, that within two years, three years, that the bridge is gonna be replaced?
They're, they're, right now, they're just, they have so many projects, that this is one end over end of their spectrum with regards to funding. So they're not even sure when it's gonna happen. But he says, just merely the fact that by the time we get to the DOT and the federal level, he says, it's gonna take at least two to three years before they even look at it.
So council, what do we wanna do with this? Do we wanna just maintain it?
If I may, and Mayor, I would, I would tend to say, if we could speak to and have Scott address the issue, and see what kind of, you know, how damaged that pipe is, and how it can be addressed, just, and we'll keep it going.
Okay, so let's do that. Can we have Scott come in at our, in our next work meeting? Good idea, I agree. We all agree to that?
Yeah.
Guys, girls?
And, and to that point, Mayor, he could also brief us on the, the pump station, so that's, yeah, but he could come in and, you know.
I'll, I'll give him a call beforehand, to sort of address and make him understand what the issue is, so at least when he comes, he comes with full knowledge.
The next work session meeting, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
Moving along, Michael.
That was all I had.
You're done?
I'm done.
All right, listen, any questions for Mike before he departs? No? Okay, Mike, stay safe, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Everyone Merry Christmas, and good holidays, and stay well.
Mrs. Delaney?
Okay, Mayor, before I proceed with the rest of the agenda, there was a request from Councilman Goldbeck to add a presentation to the agenda. Do you want to do so at this time?
Yeah, why keep them people waiting longer than they have to? Yes.
Thank, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Ms. Delaney. And, you know, I apologize for the, I guess, late notice to the council, but we are towards the end of the year, we have appointments to make in the new year. Covid is very, Covid has made budgetary processes harder, and one big number is always insurance, 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 in terms of workman's comp, liability, dental health insurance. So for the benefit of the council, to, to hear what's out there, to hear what's available to us, I'd like to ask Mr. John Calendrello, who is a risk manager in many towns in Burn County, if you could just introduce yourself, give us, you know, your spiel on what you do, and I appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you, Dan, I appreciate it. Can I just hand these out real quick? I got ten of them, so.
I have next to me.
I think it's more than enough, right? Thank you for the opportunity of having me here today. I know it's crazy circumstances out there right now. A little bit about myself and Maria Makos, we work for Characo Group in Hasbrook Heights, New Jersey. We deal with a lot of funds for municipalities and schools. We've been doing it, what?
I've been doing it for thirty-one years.
I know Maria doesn't look like it. I'm checking over here, you know.
I've been handling public entity accounts for thirty-one years. In fact, I work with Jack Cisa on one of his school board funds, and other funds, and standalone accounts that we have in our office, so I like it.
Yeah, she's busy, Maria. So, and also, we deal with a lot of health prescription and dental plans for municipalities and school districts also. And also, we do private and corporate, and a lot of, a lot of small businesses too. So, you know, just a little bit of overview of what we do and who we are. I've been doing this for twenty years. Maria's been doing it, what? Thirty-one years.
Thirty-one years.
And-
Even though she's only forty years old.
Right.
I wish.
Check her ID, Mayor. So anybody have any questions? I mean, I know, insurance is pretty boring, there's nothing exciting about the pipe, I mean, you know. Me, I'd get a piece of tape and patch it up, Mayor, and call it a day.
Yeah.
You know, like you see on the infomercial at night, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I guess important message would be to the council, is what you specialize in, and I, I know how insurance works to a certain extent.
Right.
And I know there's specialty, and what would be your specialty that would, the council would be concerned with?
Schools and towns, I, I focus on. But I don't turn away any business that, it's an opportunity, so.
So, but within that, is there a specialty like-
My specialty is property and casualty insurance. All lines of coverage, law enforcement, public officials, property, bonds, anything related to a public entity account. That, that is my field of expertise.
Well, you do realize that we're in the JIF.
Yes.
Yes.
So what would, what are we not getting from them that we can get from you? Or are you asking for us to remove ourselves from the JIF altogether? What, what is your, what is your motivation?
Our motivation is just to present ourselves, tell you who we are. We deal with a lot of different funds, we run two funds in the office, and maybe it is an opportunity that we can explore, and that maybe you're not getting here. You don't know, you don't know what's out, what's out there until you, you see something different. So, that's all.
I'm very familiar with various JIFs. We know all about different JIFs, so it's not like we're coming in blindly, we know exactly. We do comparison of coverages, and, you know, find what, what is better for you, where we can be more creative, and where, you know, we could save pricing, or alternate coverages, that's, that's where we're at.
Okay. Well, I think everybody has your perspective here.
I have a question, what municipalities do you do around this area?
We, well, we have over forty.
Windor, Hilton.
Garfield. Lodi.
Right now-
We do the school, we do the school already, Elmwood Park.
Okay.
Did you say Clifton?
City of Clifton.
We, we could send you a list, there's, there's a whole list-
It's just so many that you can't think of, all the accounts that you handle every day. Just wanted to get an idea of where-
Yeah, we're, we're, we're pretty well versed.
Any other questions?
Hasbrook Heights.
Just, just a comment to, to, I think everyone's clear, you know, we're in JIF, right? And, and this is not about being in JIF or not being about JIF, it's really, who is your professional that takes care of all your insurance matters, and who, you know, guides you, advises you, defends you, and all those types of things. So I think every town is part of different funds, part of a JIF, different things, but every town hires a professional to facilitate all that, and I think that's, that's what you guys do.
Right, exactly. Exactly. Maria's out, she's in the office all the time, and I'm out, out and about. Those are our roles.
Any other questions from the council? Well, with that, I wanna thank you for coming. Stay safe, and I'm sure the, the council will read your perspective here.
Thank you for having us. And- Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Merry Christmas to you.
You too.
Thank you. Bye-bye now.
Moving along, Mrs. Delaney.
Yes, so moving on to correspondence, the first item on the agenda is the 2021 proposed holiday schedule for your employees here at Borough Hall and Borough Hall closings. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Next, we have the 2021 proposed meeting dates for the mayor and council. For the most part, it's the same, the first, second, and third Thursdays will continue at 7:00 PM for both the work session and public. We do have July and August as just one work session, followed by one regular meeting, and then also the same for November, anticipating the Thanksgiving holiday, and perhaps if you do have the New Jersey League of Municipalities in 2021.
Wouldn't that be nice?
We'll see. I did wanna make note, so it's at your pleasure, in April, there are five Thursdays. I have a conflict with the second Thursday, so you could either have Marlene run the meeting, or we could do the first, third, and fourth for April.
Counsel?
First, third, and fourth is fun.
April.
Stick to the-
Okay, so that's the dates that I put on, is the first, third, and fourth, so these would be the correct dates.
So we wanna stick with these dates and have Marlene handle the one, is that what you're saying?
No, I'll handle it, but the date on here reflects that it's the first, third, and fourth Thursday instead of the first, second, third.
Oh, so we're changing it?
Yeah, just for April.
Everybody's agreement?
And we're sticking to seven across the board, right?
Yes. Yes. Okay.
Five, you said five? AM or PM, Mike?
All right.
I wouldn't put it past you, Mike. Go ahead, Don.
One C is Mr. Councilman Goldbeck sent this via email, but it's the official award letter for the fiscal year 2021 NJDOT municipal aid award in the amount of $239,000.
Second highest award in Burn County.
Excellent.
Okay, two Ds, just an FYI, it was sent over by our insurance company, it's the blanket accident policy for our police department. Two E's, the South Bergen JIF 2021 budgets, and also the reorganization date for the South Bergen JIF. Two F is a letter informing that an application has been filed with the NJDEP for a flood hazard area verification permit. I do have all the supporting documents in my office, if anyone wants to inspect the plans or any part of that application. I also sent this to our DPW superintendent, our construction official, our planning and zoning boards, and also our fire official.
This is something we have to fill out every year?
No, it's not us, it's actually another applicant, but we have to be advised that they are applying for this permit.
I see.
Two G is a Passaic Valley Sewerage public hearing, which will be held virtually, should anyone be interested. It's regarding their user charges.
We wanna stay off their radar right now.
Yeah. Okay, two H, I sent to the ordinance and insurance committee, it was, you know, as we've seen in the past, sometimes municipalities pass resolutions, they encourage other municipalities to do so, and they had requested that I put it on the agenda. It's from the township of Long Hill in regards to the Affordable Housing Act, and it's a resolution that demands that the New Jersey State Legislature accept its responsibility to administer the provisions of the Affordable Housing Act, and, and stay further action until such times as it has promulgated rules governing its implementation. So this is from the mayor of Long Hill, that's encouraging towns to pass this, does-
Sorry, you break this down for us?
Well, this right here is apparently in a tent by the borough of Long Hill to try to move the legislature, start taking responsibility in some of the issues with regards to low-income housing and all of that stuff. They, they're the ones that turn around and say, you gotta do it, but they don't give you any guidelines, technically, how to do it, when to do it, and how much they shouldn't put into it. And Long, Long Hill seems to feel that they should take on a little bit more of the responsibility.
Bless you. I guess it's true. So what are they looking for us to back them on this?
Yeah, basically to adopt a similar resolution, so it's up to your, it's, you know, up to your pleasure if you would like this same, a similar resolution drafted.
Bless you.
Excuse me.
Sal, you see anything, anything negative to this?
Not really, I think it's mostly, I, I personally feel that under the circumstances, there is such tremendous responsibility that the legislature puts on municipalities. And it gets to the point that they tell you to do things, and, and then they just wave them off to do what. But they don't do anything to either fund it, help, take care of, or give you guidelines, strict guidelines. So this radio only wakes them up to the point that they have to address the issue, because it's getting out of hand. A lot of municipalities are having problems with dealing with the, you know, the towns.
So, so basically, what we're trying, what they're trying to do with this is to make them accountable on, on their legislation.
To accept responsibility as to the, of, of the low-income housing, rather than being, putting the burden just on the municipality.
Okay. How's the council feel, they wanna go along with this?
I think it's a good idea.
Yes, we all in agreement? Mr. FaCello? Daniel? Okay.
The council wishes, I mean, I'd be the redrafted resolution, so that I can take one color, because I already looked at it, and I'm, I think, I wouldn't want to put a switch in there.
All right, so-
Moving along.
The last item under correspondence is a letter from Bond Council regarding bond anticipation notes, so that's Rogat McCarthy, and there was a document that the CFO had asked the, the mayor to sign, I, I remember, I happened to not be in the office. But basically, it is informing and explaining what was done with the bond anticipation notes, they've been duly authorized, executed, and delivered, so they're valid, legal, you know, legally binding. The borough has pledged its full faith and credit to the payment of, you know, the principal and interest on the notes, and, you know, Mr. Rigatano will ensure that everything that needs to be done regarding the bond anticipation notes gets done.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to resolutions, we have a request from fire company number two to hold a 2021 coin toss event.
Anybody have a problem with that? Okay.
Okay, next, we have two firemen that are able, that qualify, you know, they've served the required numbers of years as an active fireman, and they're entitled to the certificate of exemption to be signed by the county clerk, but it also first needs to be approved and signed by myself, for the municipality that they've served in.
Okay, council? No problem? Sign your life order here.
Thank you. Three C are chapter 159 finance resolutions, so again, what chapter 159 resolutions are, is if we've received a grant, we need to insert it as a line item in our budget as a source of revenue. So there are three different ones here that were submitted by our CFO.
Okay.
Three D is in regards to a PSCGEsment, so I will turn that over to our borough attorney, as it was drafted and requested by himself.
With this, Mayor and Council, what you have is that the public service electric and gas is doing a project over on, uh, sorry, a power station. Based on that, there's a drainage easement that the borough has, kind of, between the park and the railroad. They need to put in a guide wire to support some of their posts, wiring posts, and they'd like to be able to utilize that space with a guide wire. It doesn't affect the easement, it doesn't affect anything other than they will have the opportunity to use that area with that guide wire. And based on that, they would need a res, a resolution approving it, and having the mayor and council sign an agreement with them, which is giving them consent to do that, which is attached to the resolution. I've read it, I've discussed it with the corporate council over at public service electric and gas, there's not, nothing disfavorable for the municipality, there's no liability issue, they're taking all the responsibility and so forth, and I think it's a good thing to work with them rather than go against them.
Just to piggyback off of that, Sal, last night, the planning board gave its initial okay for this project, substation, completely gonna be dismantled, the existing, and a new state-of-the-art building will be put up. They're really doing it in, in a very nice fashion. We followed, threw on a multitude of questions last night concerning fire and contamination, and a host of other items, and they were answered, and I think it's gonna be a good thing for Elmwood Park, because it's gonna, it's gonna boost the amperage coming into Elmwood Park, and it's just solely for Elmwood Park, by the way. And it's, it's bringing, I guess it's- And it's, it's bringing, I guess it's bringing the equipment up to the 2000, year, 2021. So it's a good thing.
With that in mind, I just want you to be aware that we've had discussions, and I've looked at their plans, I've looked at all of the applications that they have made for permits and so forth. But for all intents and purposes, they really don't need permits or a blessing. But under circumstances, because they are going to dismantle the whole thing and that they have to place a temporary service, they can't just shut it down and not give service. So they have to put on outside service, so they didn't have space for it. And in that instance, they requested an adjacent property owner to lease them the space so that they could put temporary generators on trucks and trailers in order to switch the service so that the service is still provided while they revamp the whole. That's costing them a heck of a lot more money, just that aspect. And they're willing to do that in order they can bring, so that they can bring that station back up to standard because it hasn't been touched for, I think, over 100 years. So when that occurred, I wanted to make sure that the lease arrangement was sufficient that will cover the time period that they would need. I reviewed their lease, I reviewed the lease with the adjacent owner. I found everything was acceptable. I gave the municipal, the building department a go-ahead on my part that everything was done properly and everything is there. So I think it's going to work out very well. Once they put in the new station and they remove the temporary service.
Right. We were joking with them last night, they did make mention of the fact that they really don't need our permission, but they're being congenial. So we countered, I countered by saying to them that, "Don't get too cocky now because we have an alternative, and that's the Green New Deal. And we're going to set up windmills on Midland Avenue." And he got, I think he got a kick out of that, but he did mention that fact.
The thing is that they would not need a permit if they would do everything within their property. But because they're utilizing outside source of temporary use, that's where our.
Okay. Thank you, Sal.
Mayor, it's funny you say that, I plan to bring windmill people to the January work session.
Oh, be my guest. Would the last name be Cortez? No? Okay.
All right, so.
T-shirts, we're going to need the t-shirts, too. Green, Green New Deal.
Just one thing with Aaron, before you signed, had the mayor run and signed that agreement, there was one change that was made that I got today, so I may resend you back the agreement.
Okay, no problem.
Build in for everything.
Yep. Okay, so that will be put on the agenda. Next, under three E is the Little Falls Shared Service Agreement. So we'll need a resolution authorizing that execution, which we had previously discussed at a work session meeting. I'm sorry?
The resolution.
Oh, okay, yep. Perfect. I could send it my way, I'll have it on for next Thursday.
This is our deal with them?
Yes.
Okay.
Three F are resolutions which were submitted by our tax department. There are eight of them, and they're all resolutions to refund overpayments. Next, three G is a request for a handicap parking spot, which was reviewed and approved by the traffic division in the police department. Any questions? Okay, three H are quotes for regrading at Rosemont Park using funds from capital bonds ordinance 20-04. There are funds available for this. It was at the request of our DPW superintendent to level out the area around Rosemont Park.
In discussion with Mike about this, it's after the fact, but you truly, it's called site remediation. When you put new entities in with different elevations, you're going to have high spots and low spots. So what we need to do there now is come in with some soil and correct those elevations.
It's already done, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
It's already done.
It's already done? Oh, it's okay, okay.
All right, three I is a resolution to redeem a third-party tax lien, which was also submitted by our tax department. Three J is the risk management agreement for 2021, which was submitted by PIA and, you know, as their business registration certificates, et cetera, and all their paperwork included.
Council members, if you would indulge me, I'd like to move, hold this over to executive. I have some legal questions for the attorney. I just want to throw it out there.
What are we doing with this? I didn't, I'm following.
I have questions for legal counsel about this, so I'm asking if we could just address it briefly in.
In executive, he wants to put it, hold it for executive to discuss with the attorney because he has some questions.
Okay.
Okay, so that will be held until further discussion in executive. So moving on, three K is the municipal hazard mitigation plan resolution. This is required for all municipalities through the OEM department. And Bergen County has provided a template as well, which is included. Any questions there? All right, three L includes six vacation buyback requests and one sick time buyback request.
Any problems with the council on that? Moving along.
Okay, and then last resolution on the agenda is the resolution to accept the 2021 Safe and Secure Grant from the Department of Law and Public Safety. This was set over by Millennium Strategies.
They're doing a great job.
Yeah, they are. Any questions? Okay, I do just want to make note, I did receive some items that are fairly important late after the agenda was done, so they may need to be added, if it's okay with everyone, to next week's meeting. But rather than sending so many at once, I was kind of just waiting, and I'll send them all together via email since the agendas already went out and were made, and they were received at the last minute. Is that okay? All right, moving on to ordinances. We have the sale of property ordinance in regards to the EMT Rescue Golf Car. I did send an email out regarding this because we need two readings. This will be introduced with your approval at next week's meeting. The second reading, public hearing, needs to happen in 2020. We can't carry it over to 2021. But we have to keep in mind that you have to have seven days after publication of notice of the public hearing and the date of the public hearing. So that is why December 30th was picked, you can't do it any sooner. The 31st is New Year's Eve, so we'll have the second reading for this on December 30th.
Okay. Any questions with this? Moving along.
Okay, moving along, under departmental reports. Five A, we have the EMS call report for November 2020. Five B, we have zoning board of adjustment minutes from September, October 14th and October 28th. I have been trying to get boards to send me the minutes as they go. Some do, some don't, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. But, you know, I like to get them up on the website, and so that's sometimes why you see a lot at once or older minutes being presented in front of you. So that's five B. Five C is the Millennium Strategies report through November 2020.
Excuse me. Mike, correct me, I should refresh my memory. Did we notify them about in the future grants for the library, Millennium? We did. So they were on the lookout for grants? Very good. Thank you.
Okay, five D is the October, November 2020 municipal court report. October is a little bit delayed because our court administrator was out for some time. So that's why you have both of those months there. Five E is the library board meeting minutes from October. And then five F are the planning board minutes from February, September, October 7th, October 14th, and November 16th. And then lastly, we have our finance report through the end of November 2020 for all of our departments. Any questions, anyone? All right, that's all I have, Mayor, right now.
All right, moving on to committee reports, and Mr. Faesolo.
Just two things, Mayor. I want to commend Councilman Golubek for the two grants that we received. I know he worked hard on a lot of them. The most recent one, the NJ DOT grant, I want to commend him for all his hard work on those. Also, I noticed that the traffic light at the exit ramp of Route 80 and River Drive is out. If we could get that replaced. I know it's out completely, I said it was dimming, and now it's out completely. Right at the exit ramp of 80 and River Drive. Good question. That would be, that would be west, right? Yeah, west.
The actual light on River, right, like as you're heading towards Fairlawn?
Yeah, you're going toward Twisted Elm. So like, before the Dunkin' Donuts, yeah. Yeah, it's out. Progress, Mayor.
Mr. Golubek.
Progress, Mayor.
Mrs. Engley?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the chief of police, the fire department, and Sean and his colleagues at the rec for a great tree lighting ceremony. They did go above and beyond this year to make it very eventful. The tactical elves and all of those extra little things. There's nothing more that I like than seeing grown men having a good time, and it was really fun. And I think that the residents definitely appreciate it. So thank you to everybody involved in that, in progress.
It was a very good evening. I even got the chance to sit on Sanders' lap. But excellently done to all that, to put forth that effort. It's well appreciated, and I'm sure next year it'll only make it even better. Mr. Pellegrini?
Yes, just a few things. Board of health update, on November 18th, 18 dogs and five cats were vaccinated at the rabies clinic. Their next meeting will be held on Monday, December 14th, at 7:00 PM. Police update, our Elmwood Park PBA will be conducting their annual toy drive to make a child's Christmas a little more special. They will be collecting unwrapped new toys until December 20th at the Elmwood Park Police Department. Together, we can make this year a little better, one smile at a time, so please give if you can. Also, I want to commend everybody on the tree lighting. The tree lighting was on Monday, it was a big hit. It was truly a night of fun and joy for all. The children were happy to see Santa and all of his friends. A big thank you goes to our rec department, police department, fire department, and our DPW, and all the volunteers that made it a very special event for all. Residents Assistance Program update, yesterday, the Residents Assistance Program Committee, along with the Police Committee Relations Division, received a donation of 100 toys from Hanum Church in Elmwood Park. Their generosity will help those in need this holiday season. We know these gifts will bring joy to so many children. Our community helping each other is what it's all about. Also, the RAP is still collecting new unwrapped toys until December 14th. For more information on how to donate or become a volunteer, please call Angela Fava or Dion York at 201-796-1457, extension 106, or 211. Also, this is our third year, and we are on track to help over 200 families in need because of the generosity of so many. Give what you can, and it will make a difference in someone's life. Thank you. Also, the results are final from the November 3rd election. Congratulations to all the winners who will serve on the Board of Education. Best of luck and much success to all of you. I would like to thank my family and friends for their endless support on my council reelection. A big thank you to all the residents that voted for me so I can continue my work on the council. There's been so much progress in the last few years, and there is much more to come. I've given many years of service to our community, which I love so much, and I look forward to serving another three years and working together with everyone for the betterment of our great community. Thank you, progress, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Westley?
Okay, we spoke about the library already. Mike, you're going to go check some more with the, with the, you know. I'd like to thank Danny, too, all of the hard work, and everything you do. That, you know, you help this town is one special thing. The police department, fire department, and the rec department, they're outstanding. What they do for this town, after every breath they have for every child, it makes, puts a smile on their faces. And I told everybody, tell everybody, there are, there are angels. These police officers and the fire department, there are angels that are protecting and saving everybody that they can. So please join this holiday team, just save one extra person for our fire department and our police department, make sure they're safe, and everybody goes home safe at night. Thank you. Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Thank you, Doris. Council President Ballisteri?
Okay, first, I want to again commend everyone that was involved in the tree lighting, our rec director, Sean, and our police, fire, and of course, DPW. It was really a wonderful night, and it was very successful. So thank you to all. We have our next Board of Rec meeting on Monday, December 14th, at 7:30. I have to say that our new rec director is doing a great job. Everything's moving along smoothly, he communicates well with everybody, and, and he's only here three months, but he's, he's fitting in really, really good. And I'm really happy about that. And I also want to thank the residents for their confidence to reelect me for another three years. I'd like to congratulate my running mate as well, and to all the Board of Education members that won. And also to commend those that did run but were not successful. So just keep on trying, if this is what's in your heart, you just keep, you know, moving forward, and I'm sure you'll have success in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
Never give up, right?
Never give up.
I also would like to congratulate the two candidates that are now officially, well, unofficially, getting very close to officially, are going to be with us for another three years. You've just worked hard, and you reap what you sow. So that's all good. The council covered mostly all the events that have gone by in the last week or two, and I won't bore you with anything further on that. I just want to make mention of the planning board meeting last night, the old Marcal building down there at Slater Drive, which is destined for demolition, and a new warehouse is going to be put up there. We met and approved the new plans. It's going to be a state-of-the-art building in reference to the river walk path. We couldn't get that path in front of their area that borders the river, but it's going to make a turn, come up to Slater Drive, and it'll end there. So in essence, if you're walking from the apartments on River Road, on the west side of River Road, and you're going through their river walk path, you will come to the area by Slater Drive, go over a little bridge, and then continue up into the actual Covasack. And that was the best we can get out of it. We also got out of them an easement in front of their riverfront property in the event someday that we can get the coordinated effort to continue the walking path from Garfield over to Fairlawn. So it was a good night for the town. They're an excellent company. It's going to be a state-of-the-art building, like I said before. And they were, they were very concerned and amiable to us. Am I correct with that, Jeff? Were they, they were very amiable to us?
Pretty much.
Right? They weren't, they weren't looking just to take us over the coals. Yeah, well. All right, that's it for me. May I have a motion?
Mayor, if I may.
Sure, yeah, good, so, I'm sorry.
Just one thing, I was made aware by the building department that the resolution that we have with, of course, outdoor dining terminates at dawn on December 31st.
That's one of the items that I'm going to send to them via email for next week.
Good, I just want to make sure, I have that right here.
Yep.
They do all, so it's the resolution, which you'll probably see it next week.
We're looking to extend that, correct?
Yes.
Is there a sunset on it?
December 31st.
December 31st or 20, 21, 20?
December 31st. It's standing at the April 30th because it is, the state is remapping the statutes and codes regarding certain aspects that affect that, what it is. And that will be finalized in April. So by April, we'll know what the state is doing and what they're approving so that we can then revisit one more time and see what we have to do to qualify what the state is.
Extend it. Yeah. Yeah, we moved very quickly on that, if you all recall, when that first happened. And these poor restaurants, they've taken such a hit. It's, it's...
That's been very good. I think it's been helpful to the community.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. But I'm, I'm happy that we moved quickly. Okay, anything else?
Mayor, if I may, before we close up, I just want to wish Councilwoman Pellegrina happy birthday.
Whose birthday?
Saturday, Saturday.
Oh, Saturday? Okay. How old are you now?
You don't want to know.
Enjoy it Saturday.
Thank you.
I would say, is your husband taking you out for dinner? But you can't go to dinner. White Castle is open, though. May I have a motion to open the floor for public comment? All in favor? Anyone from the public here to speak on any of the items that we spoke about this evening? If not, I will close the public portion.
Yeah, so I'm trying to see if, is, is it actually, like, happening? Thank you, thank you for reminding me. So Mayor, what, what Mrs. Greslack is, is asking is the Bergen County Winter Wonderland, the Christmas tree. Last year, we had a bismal tree. And we were looking to see if any organization in town wants to take, you know, action on the tree and decorating it. If we could get an organization to do that, it would be a lot, very helpful. But if not, maybe we could do it again this year?
The one that we have in town?
No, the one in, Advanced Lawn Park, yeah.
The county, the county tree.
I thought the rec director had a plan for that, but I'll follow up.
Did he? Okay, yeah, let me know.
Thank you for bringing...
I was talking about the tree in town.
The one that we took from there last night.
Oh, the winter, oh, I thought you were talking about the one over there. Okay.
Yeah, we did decorate that.
Yeah. Okay.
I think Sean from the rec wanted to have the kids do something, so.
There you go. Thank you.
No one else?
Yes. The lighting, Central Park style lighting, we call it that, right by Rice Bowls or whatever it's called, right in front of there. One of the shades, the glass by the kosher, the bowl goes upright in it, the shade is, it's been like that for a while.
Yeah, we, we...
I know. I did, I thought they fixed it for a while, didn't they?
We told, yeah, and then it happened again. So we told Public Service, and they promised us they'd come out and fix it for us. So I'll follow up when we...
Would that bend, that bent over again?
Yeah.
And there's one that is missing completely, so.
I don't know yet, because it was, I don't think it was.
No doubt about it. We'll, we'll follow up again with them.
Thank you, Jeff. No one else cares to speak? I will close the public portion. May I have a motion to enter into executive session? All in favor? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Where is the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss personnel and litigation legal reports, minutes will be kept. And once the confidence, once a matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved that the public be excluded from this meeting.
Okay, who's taking the lead on this?